Good evening, everyone. Bonsoir to the monde. My name is Alex Neve and I'm one of the four commissioners with the Ottawa People's Commission on the convoy occupation. My dear colleagues will introduce themselves as they each take their turn to speak. We are, this is our second gathering. We, as many of you may know, and some of you were perhaps even there, we began yesterday afternoon with, and heard from a number of people in a session that was held at the McNab Community Centre and are delighted to be here at Le Patro this evening to continue that process and hear from others. When we opened yesterday, especially because it was our first session, we were very much honoured to have a welcoming prayer and comments and advice and guidance for us from Sheldon McGregor, who is an Algonquin Anishnaabic apprentice firekeeper from Kiddiganzebe. And I of course wouldn't dare to attempt to summarise what he shared with us, but just wanted to let you know that we began in that way, which was very important for us. Had very thoughtful and helpful comments from Sheldon, who spoke to us obviously about the importance of community, about the importance of boundaries, and very much about the importance of communication. And gave us strong sense of how important he saw this work and wished us very well in the journey that we all collectively as a community have in front of us over the weeks and months to come. And that leads me to acknowledge on behalf of my fellow commissioners and on behalf of the Ottawa People's Commission, that of course we are engaging on this journey on unceded, unsurrendered Algonquin Anishnaabic territory, which is a very important reality for us to acknowledge in any context, but it carries particularly deep significance and meaning in the journey that we are on, because of course what is at the heart of all of this was an occupation of those lands. An occupation of those lands, yes, in some instances by people who do call these lands home themselves, but in many instances an occupation for many weeks by people from elsewhere. And there's an important reality related to the rights of Indigenous peoples, our responsibilities around reconciliation that lies at the heart of that and certainly is something that we will be carrying with us in every session of this commission as we go forward. That in turn highlights, I guess, a broader important recognition of what this commission is all about, and that is that it's all about human rights in so many ways. It's really as plain and simple as that. And already yesterday, and we know it will continue this evening, we're hearing about human rights. We're hearing about human rights harm. We're hearing about human rights violations and abuse. We're hearing about a palpable sense of human rights concern. We're certainly hearing about human rights responsibilities and obligations, which may or may not have been met by those who have the responsibility and obligation to do so. And that's going to frame our entire approach to this commission, is that human rights lens. And that certainly does include the right to protest, the rights to freedom of expression, to peaceful assembly, those absolutely essential rights that are at the heart of society and a strong democracy. We have a strong commitment to the importance of those set of rights and that will be in our minds and we'll be grappling with that throughout. There is a much wider human rights landscape that is absolutely essential as well, and that's the full spectrum of human rights that every member of the communities that were impacted by the convoy occupation hold. And those are rights which were imperiled and violated in a whole host of ways, every minute, every hour, every day throughout the occupation. And we're very much focused on hearing those human rights stories and experiences. The questions that we need to understand include whether those human rights were well-respected and acknowledged. Did officials, did the police live up to their obligations to do so? And that's what we'll be building a deeper awareness and understanding of, most importantly through the personal experiences that we are going to be hearing about and reading about through the testimonial submissions we receive. So it's an important process and I know certainly speaking for myself, it's a great honour to be in this position and be along for this journey. That is it from me. Maintenant, j'aimerais passer la parole à mon collègue et cher ami Monia Mazig.
Merci, merci Alex. Bonsoir to the monde. Je m'appelle Monia Mazig et je suis invitée sur cette terre non cédée de la nation Algonquin depuis maintenant plus de trois décennies. J'en suis à la fois privilégiée et honnoraie. J'espère toujours me conduire d'une manière humble et reconnaissante. Aujourd'hui, je me sens vraiment privilégiée pour faire partie de cette commission populaire d'Ottawa en compagnie de mes collègues commissionnaires Alex Neve, Leyla Nifarha and Debbie Awusu Atia. Cependant, avec le sentiment de privilège vient aussi le sentiment de responsabilité et de partage. En effet, on peut pas se sentir privilégié et sans donner en retour. C'est important pour moi de contribuer à la communauté qui m'a accueillie sur cette terre avec générosité. En écoutant les témoignages de mes concitoyens et mes concitoyennes, c'est important pour que les résidents d'Ottawa se sentent à la fois écouter et représenter. Je m'apprête à accomplir cette tâche avec beaucoup d'attention, de justice et surtout de compassion. Je ne suis pas juge et je ne suis pas avocate. Je suis une autrice, une personne qui aime lire, qui aime écrire et surtout qui aime réfléchir. Et c'est dans ce sens que j'aimerais écouter les expériences, les histoires vécues par les résidents et les résidantes d'Ottawa pour que je puisse comprendre ce qui est vraiment passé pendant la période de janvier 2022 à la période au mois de février 2022, où le convoi de camions est arrivé à Ottawa et s'est installé dans plusieurs quartiers de la ville. Votre parole est importante pour aller au fond de cet épisode. Ne la censurez pas et ne la sous-estimez pas. Tout mot a sa place dans cette salle, bien évidemment dans la limite du respect mutuel et du civisme. J'ai grandi en n'ayant pas cette capacité de partager mon histoire. J'ai grandi entouré par un sentiment d'impuissance et de peur. Impuissance en écoutant les adultes sceptiques et découragés me dire que tu ne peux rien changer. Peur en ayant peur de ces mêmes adultes qui vont parfois me punir, plus tard peur des policiers qui m'espionnent et qui veulent m'humilier à chaque occasion. Ces sentiments vivent encore en moi même ici au Canada et même en étant devenue une adulte et même après des années en forgeant mon caractère pour me sentir plus forte. Même si nos sociétés ont beaucoup évolué sur le plan technologique, malheureusement elles restent assez figées sur le plan humain. Nos sociétés sont encore frileuses à donner la parole à plus de gens et surtout à faire sentir aux gens que leur existence est importante quel que soit leur appartenance, leur race, leur niveau d'éducation et leurs conditions socio-économiques. Nous avons encore beaucoup de chemin à faire. Mais chers concitoyens et concitoyennes, surtout ne vous sentez pas impuissants et surtout n'ayez pas peur. Vous êtes entourés de votre communauté et de gens qui ne veulent que vous aider à bâtir un avenir meilleur pour nos enfants et pour notre ville. Cette commission populaire dont nous entamons la deuxième séance d'audience publique aujourd'hui est un élément clé de la réponse de la communauté à la perturbation engendrée par le convoi des camions l'hiver dernier et qui a affecté à la fois les résidents et aussi les entreprises locales. Notre objectif est de créer ce lieu de guérison et de justice en écoutant les histoires, vos histoires, qui ont été des gens qui ont été les plus touchés et en examinant la réponse des gouvernements et de la communauté en vue de faire de recommandations pour que cela ne se reproduise plus jamais. Je vous remercie d'avance pour votre courage et pour votre présence. Je remercie également toutes les personnes qui ont travaillé avec beaucoup de passion, beaucoup d'acharnement pour mettre en place cette commission. Et bien sûr, je tiens à remercier mes collègues et amis, les commissionnaires, de partager leur sagesse, leur contribution avec moi. Merci.
Hi, everyone. My name is Debbie Awusu Atia. You see her pronouns and I'm a proud commissioner of the Ottawa People's Commission. I wanted to kind of share a little bit about how we're reaching out to community members and what has been done so far and what we will continue to do over the next couple of months. So today is the second of this week, but it's part of the first series of in-person public hearings over the next three months. We're also going to be holding hearings online and meeting privately with local residents. In addition, we're holding consultations with communities that were particularly impacted, including Asian seniors, women who live in shelters, members of the Indigenous community, the Black community, the Muslim community, and the Tuas LGBTQI community and others. As well, people have been welcome to submit written submissions. You know, for myself, as someone who was emotionally, mentally impacted by the occupation despite not living in the red zone, I had to play a role in supporting many people and watched other communities play a role in supporting those who were directly impacted by the occupation. I think what I like about the multi-pronged approach of the OPC is that we're allowing folks to be able to share their thoughts, whatever their thoughts are on the commission and the way that best suits them. In particular, oftentimes we forget about those who are directly impacted by additional forms of oppression, who dealt with the occupation differently than what we've probably already heard. And so the fact that we've dedicated time and resources for community members of additional marginalised groups is a wonderful thing to see and I encourage you all, if you can, to let folks know that these opportunities are available for them if they choose not to participate in this forum. So thank you. I'm going to pass it off to my colleague Leyla Nifarha.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Leyla Nifarha. I'm a human rights lawyer and advocate. What animates me or gets me up in the morning is a belief that democracy and human rights are fragile and therefore need to be vigorously defended. And so I'm honoured to be here in the capacity of a commissioner. This is a unique forum, a people's commission. This sort of forum, in my opinion, is essential to creating fulsome democracy. The only way that democracy can function effectively is if everyone is enabled to participate in it. The OPC provides spaces and places for all rights holders to speak about their experiences during the occupation of Ottawa by the convoy. This process will allow many an opportunity to release what I think so many of us have been carrying inside for many months. It provides an opportunity to be heard and to be seen. And this forum will provide us with all that we need to know to ensure the better protection of human rights for the people in Ottawa in the future. I take seriously my role as commissioner and I'm here in the service of the Ottawa People's Commission and in the service of democracy. So now, let me talk about the run of the show. I think tonight we have six local residents who registered to appear today before the commission. Each will offer their own opening remarks for a few minutes and that will be followed by questions from the commissioners, should we have any. The commission has made every effort to verify the identity of all of those who registered to speak today. To protect their privacy, some presenters may not use their full names or their real name. Our session today is public. I'm not sure if there, I think there is some media here, but the media have been asked to respect and protect the identity of those appearing before us. We are trying to create an open and welcoming and safe space. Everyone is asked to wear a mask, those speakers of course. I agree. Those speakers of course have the option to remove them when they're speaking. We want to ensure a respectful exchange and we will not permit offensive, hateful or violent language. Anyone who uses such language or is disruptive will be asked to leave. We recognise that there are people who are traumatised by their experience of the convoy. Anyone who is feeling distressed, please know we do have a counsellor on hand with whom you can speak. I'm not sure where she is, but somewhere. Oh, there. Thank you so much. She's put her hand up. Thank you. As you know, our session today is being interpreted into French and English, so we're all encouraged to speak as clearly and slowly as possible to facilitate their very difficult task. So with those ground rules, let's have the first speaker present.
My name's Kim Lidbetter. I am a resident of Centertown. I live in a ground floor apartment on Kent Street and had vehicles parked in front of my home for the full time the occupation was in the city of Ottawa. I work from home because our, the organisation I work for gave up our office space due to world circumstances that office space didn't seem to be required anymore, or reconsidered positions until everything returned to a different state. So I also work from home. February, sorry, January 28th, which was Friday, I was working from home and vehicles started to roll down Kent Street mid-afternoon, probably 1:00, 2:00 p.m. I became aware of what was headed towards the city of Ottawa on the Monday previous to vehicles showing up on the Friday. I was flying home from Halifax, visiting my youngest daughter who is in university. She sent me a text before I boarded my flight saying, "Hey mum, hope when you get home to Ottawa, there's not a whole bunch of kerfuffle", because she saw something online. I then looked it up, saw vehicles were in B.C. or Alberta at that point and thought, "Okay, this isn't going to impact my ride home from the airport". But of course, then followed the story throughout the week. That week before vehicles showed up, the city of Ottawa put up special event permits all up and down Kent Street. I pay the city of Ottawa for a parking permit because I don't have parking on site. So this restricted my ability to go to and to park in front of my home in a space that I pay additional money for before vehicles showed up. So I believe the special event permits went up on the Thursday, so on the Wednesday evening. So when we woke up Thursday morning, no one could park on Kent and surrounding areas. I did not walk around to see where the other special event permits were. Friday evening, it was a steady stream of vehicles going up Kent Street, honking, noise, yahooing, people using the offshoot areas that might have grassy knolls to use as washroom facilities as required, right beside the building I live in. This continued all the way through Friday. Friday night about, I was gonna say between 10:00 and 11:00 p.m., the honking stopped. Saturday morning, vehicles started to move again once everybody was up and at it. So vehicles Friday night started parking overnight so that no one could move. However, there wasn't enough volume in the city. I assume that on Saturday, vehicles continued to move through. So it wasn't the same group that were parked in front of my house on Friday night versus the group that were parked in front of my house on the Saturday night. But Saturday, you would have thought along Kent Street with people with all kinds of paraphernalia, that it was almost like a parade-like environment, really bizarre. But at that point, the general consensus that I seemed to hear from everyone around me was, everyone's showing up for the weekend, they will be gone by Monday. So I bought into that. Not that I participated, but I bought into it that things will just keep moving along. However, come Sunday morning and throughout this point, honking, revving of engines, it's the middle of winter and people are living in vehicles. So vehicles were running on a 24-hour period with exhaust outside my bedroom, living room, kitchen and bathroom, one-bedroom apartment windows. So come Sunday morning around 11:00 a.m., the vehicles stopped. So that group of vehicles could no longer proceed along Kent Street. They, for the most part, other than some finagling they did amongst themselves to get vehicles in and out, was the same group of people in front of my home. That contained private passenger vehicles, pickup trucks, motorhomes, big rigs, trailers, tents, fires, a supply trailer was on my stretch of the road too. So there was constant people coming in and out with different types of methods to continuously supply the folks that were there. Once the supplies were on the back of the flatbed truck, there were blue tarps used. I think, I believe during most of the period, the weather was pretty agreeable from a snow standpoint, so the tarps weren't always on, but when it was going to snow, there was tarps definitely put on. So from the time it was gridlocked on the Sunday morning, mid, late morning, somewhere between 10:00 and noon, those people stayed. The honking continued on. Monday morning came, I had to work. I worked from a laptop. I did not plug in my headphones. I let every meeting internally and externally hear the baloney that was going outside my window. So did interrupt my workday a bit, but I also wanted to make a point to people, this is not a peaceful environment. I'm not sure what people deem as appropriate behaviour when it comes to getting your point across in the manner of protest, but I'm pretty sure what went on for that three-week period would not meet the threshold of being appropriate should all of those vehicles running on a 24-hour basis be in people's personal laneways or be in people's personal streets versus a downtown city core. I stayed in my home until February 3rd, which was the Thursday, so almost a full week. Honking continued. It during the week lessened where it would, wasn't going till 9:30, 10:00, 10:30, 11:00. It was more things than the honking, I think because other people who were honking needed peace and quiet after a while. It would stop a little earlier and it would start a little later in the morning. Thursday, February 3rd was my 50th birthday and friends of mine wanted to take me out for dinner but weren't comfortable with me leaving or coming back. And during that week, I had only left my home on two occasions. So in preparation for the convoy, the Friday they were supposed to arrive, I went and stocked up on groceries, was bound and determined I wasn't leaving for the weekend just to avoid the mess, which was fine. I was fully equipped to, you know, stay home without going anywhere. Monday morning, when I realised they weren't leaving, I thought, "Okay, this can only last another day or two". So worked my workday. That was January 31st, which was the day that restrictions were lifted in Ontario. So then I had the privilege of going back to see my community at my gym, who are super important to me. So that evening, after I was done my workday, finagled my way through the mess of the road to another spot where I had to park to get into my car. When I came home on that Monday evening after the gym, it would have been about 6:30 p.m., parked on the street, had to walk several blocks longer than I would normally have to. It was dark and on the street, there are bonfires, there are propane tanks beside the bonfires amongst a whole bunch of vehicles. And as I'm walking up Kent, I'm like, "I cannot believe this is happening, but what am I supposed to do about it?". Everyone is aware this is going on, so I thought the responsible thing to do is to call 311, which I did do on that Monday evening. And the 311 person directed me to call 911. When I called 911, the operator made me aware that they were aware what was going on on Kent Street and the fires were probably lit because people were cold. So I felt like an idiot for even bringing it up because the authorities clearly were aware, but nothing was going to happen. So the next morning was my second trek out of the house outside of going to the gym. I walk up the street to go grab a coffee and as I'm coming out in the morning, 6:30 in the morning, there's two gentlemen standing outside their big truck who referred to my physical appearance, so the whole "good morning, beautiful, blah, blah, blah" spiel, and I just ignored them. And they asked me if I supported them and I said, "I hope things get figured out soon". Well, these two gentlemen started ranting and raving at me. "We're staying, we're not effing going anywhere". So that was the last time during the time that these people occupied our city that I went out for anything to do to support my local businesses that I would normally go to for coffees and meals, just when we were opening up again and they should have been receiving revenue from me, I couldn't spend the money that I earned in my local businesses, nor did I feel comfortable during that timeframe doing any type of delivery service, because why the heck would I ask someone to come to my home when I'm not comfortable coming to and from my home? So I navigated going in and out generally first thing in the morning. If I needed groceries, I just planned at 8 o'clock before everybody was awake, I would walk to the two grocery stores in my neighbourhood. So February 3rd, I left with my friends. They asked me when, they said, "We're not going to bring you back home till the morning", because I was adamant I wasn't going to leave, because it made me mad that I should have to leave my home because other people are there. But I packed an overnight bag, more clothes than just an overnight bag, and they convinced me to stay for the weekend, which I did do. So I was not home February 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th. The 8th was on the Tuesday when the injunction had been made for this honking to stop. So I convinced my pals to let me go back home because there's no longer going to be any honking. So that's what I did then, go back home. Yes, the honking did stop, however, the vehicles were still running. People were still defecating all the grassy areas around the unit I am in and I'm still amazed, I have watched all summer to see if there's been any clean-up of any of those areas and nothing has happened. There is no way for three weeks of people releasing themselves, that there should not have been some type of reparation made to those surrounding areas. And it was exhausting and I didn't really realise till months, you know, after this event, how severely it impacted me. My daughter, who was in university, could not plan to come home for her reading week in February, because as if she's going to come home when this mess is on. So that is the scoop. It was not peaceful for me, it was incredibly stressful. I do not, for the first time in my adult life being a resident of the city of Ottawa, I felt unsafe. I felt there... I felt there was not any type of municipal, provincial, or federal authority who was taking care of the situation to make sure the residents could come and go from their homes with absolute freedom. Our lives were put on hold for what reason? I don't understand why certain people were allowed to break the law blatantly with almost zero consequence.
Thank you so much. Oops, sorry. We appreciate you sharing those personal experiences. I know it's hard and it's really hard to be the first person to go. You did great. Thank you so much. You saw, we were all taking copious notes. It's great. I'll just ask my fellow commissioners if anyone has any questions for the deputant.
Sure, thanks so much, Kim. I very much appreciated that, as Leilani said. I'd like to pick up on, you made the reference to your call to 311 and then being bumped over to 911. And how disheartening that was. I'm wondering if there were any other times that you, that you tried to reach out to police?
I did. So when there was some sort of change, because, because I was stuck at home, all of a sudden I'm watching city council meetings and OPS meetings and that is a whole, I could go on for days about that, but when the rule changed, or whatever changed, that people bringing supplies in became more illegal, or whatever, that Saturday, it was a beautiful sunny day. I watched the convoy vehicles rejig themselves to allow fancy-use SUVs with lovely Ontario plates, with husband-and-wives couples getting out with jerry cans of fuel, all of those type of things. So I did report that. I've sent video to the, sorry.
You did report it to who?
The Ottawa Police. Yep. And I have replied back to emails, but with police report numbers, which then I then sent back video evidence of people with plates. And I got a reply, they can't take images by email. So, actually, it's another point. I have, my Gmail account has been spiked to the limit that I've had to go in and delete every email known to man, unsubscribe from stuff because my Google account is full of video data and photos from that three-week period. I just would set my phone up and you would see people do it. Well, initially when the vehicles were moving through, not sport utility vehicles, but like four-wheel-drive vehicles, doing donuts on Kent Street, revving their engines, huge exhaust, you know, honking their horns. I have it all on video. And I haven't, although I don't look at it, I haven't deleted it because I do feel it's important for someone to have it somewhere, but no one seems to want it.
I think we can receive, we can receive that information.
Okay, okay. If we can figure out how to get it from there to you, I would be happy to delete it off of my life.
So you did send those emails to the police. You say you got a police report number.
And no follow-up.
Was there any, did anyone even contact you? Or you were never interviewed?
Nothing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that the, were there any other times that you reached out to the police? Or maybe even also to elected officials?
During, I did not reach, I'd have to check about elected officials. Actually, I did. I reached out to, at the time, it was from one of the Ottawa Police Services Board meetings. I sent an email to a couple of people. Now, I can't remember their replies, but I have them in my Gmail account. Carolyn Meehan's office replied. But I don't think everybody replied who I sent information to.
Does anyone else have, oh, sorry, Alex, were you finished?
Maybe just to kind of wrap, to wrap that up then. Sort of after those efforts, what was your general feeling or impression of what your government, your police were doing in response?
I can honestly say there was zero police presence on Kent Street during the entire time. I never saw anyone walking around until that, was it the Friday before they cleared everybody out on the Saturday? And what was most amazing to me was how the police were only comfortable walking in groups. I'm a single person who lives by myself. Where is my option to walk in a group? They, people with authority who, you know, generally can respond to calls on a single person or a partner basis, all of a sudden had to start walking our neighborhood? That, to me, spoke volumes. I'm like, this is way more serious than they're letting the residents know because why would the police need to be walking in groups? They should already have some sort of confidence, just based on the authority they have to deal with the situation at hand, that a average or regular person, civilian, would not have those options to deal with the situation. So that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and to my colleagues, I think we're running short on time.
Okay.
So you have a question and I have a quick question. I don't know if Debbie does.
Okay, sorry.
Maybe you mentioned it at the beginning. How many years did you live in Ottawa downtown?
Actually, I moved to Centertown in August the year before. I've always lived rurally, outside the city. I raised my family outside. So I moved to Centertown in August. My experience was great. I worked from home, it was great. So there was nothing that didn't.
Have you seen such a thing before that?
Never in my life have I been in that kind of experience. I have four children, who, a few of them were a handful. So personally, I've had experiences with different city officials, whether it's bylaw, whether it's police, social services, you name it, I've been involved. There would never have been that tolerance for other groups of people in any other circumstance. This was, I just, it didn't compute with me at all. I'm like, this is just now part of the more make-believe that I am living in in 2022. Yeah. It didn't, yeah.
Thank you.
Very quickly, you mentioned seeing this supply trailer
Yes.
and the movement of supplies. Can you just describe that to me a little bit more? Was it, did it seem organized to you? Did it seem chaotic? Was it?
Oh, no, it was organized. It was organized. They knew when people were coming in, they, there was no one waiting around. There was plenty of help. It was SWAS. So at certain points, it was vehicles bringing stuff in. And then in other times, it was more overt, covert? I don't know what the word is. Yeah. There was actually this really wild vehicle that went back in that looked like a fuel truck, but when you opened up the back, it wasn't a fuel truck, they were just full of supplies. I have video of all of it, license plates and all.
I'm sure we'd like to receive your video. And my other question, it's my last one. And it may be a bit personal and you're free to not answer the question. But you said that you didn't really realize how affected you were in an ongoing way until after the fact. Could you just, like, did something trigger that? Or like, what made you realize, hey, wait, this is still, I mean, you're here now, right? So like, what made you realize, like, there's still something going on in me here about this?
Well, I think for a lot of it was just post-the-event that people's perception, all of a sudden in work meetings, I'd have people coming in from Toronto or Vancouver, it wasn't that bad. We heard it wasn't that bad. And I'm like in a professional setting and I'm like, ugh, it was that bad. So it's, and, you know, it's always tricky because, you know, we all work in environments where we may not be on the same page as every one, single one of your colleagues. So even amongst my colleagues, it would, it was a source of tension. Because I just never felt that anyone recognized how, and inappropriate is not a strong enough word, but I don't know the other word for it. Because if it was illegal, no one made it seem like that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Richter. R-I-C-H-T-E-R. I'll begin my presentation with an excerpt from a conversation I had with someone who was affected by the convoy. "I ran into one just now. My entire body seized up from fear and anger and I almost blacked out." Unquote. "That is just one line from text messages that were going back and forth between friends and neighbors in Overbrook who were experiencing the terror and fear of being invaded and occupied by this far-right so-called Freedom Convoy as it was welcomed and given safe haven in the parking lot in our neighborhood at the Hampton Inn, which is located on Coventry and the Vanier Parkway. We, the people of Overbrook and Vanier too, were locked inside of our homes, unable to go to work or go to do groceries, see our families, or make it to our medical appointments because we feared an encounter with someone from the convoy who might go out of their way to hurt us. I remember the first time I saw one of those pickup trucks from Alberta in our city. It was on Saint Laurent Boulevard as I stood in a bus shelter waiting for my bus. The young racialized people who were in the shelter with me remarked, 'Check out that flag.' They looked up from their smartphones and let out a nervous laugh as the truck passed by. What I noticed is that the truck appeared exactly where I thought it would because I was following stories on social media of people who were keeping track of the convoy's movement before they came into the city, civilians. I knew that they would be inclined to do laps and encircle Vanier and Overbrook and surrounding areas when they got here because they were given the green light by someone to stash their vehicles and materials at the parking lot of the Hampton Inn. What I heard from word-of-mouth and whisper networks was that someone either at the city, the police services, or in the business world had given them permission to set up shop at the Hampton Inn parking lot. I even heard that a banner went up somewhere that was visible from the baseball stadium to traffic on the 417 that said, 'Welcome Freedom Convoy.' This was all a few days before the carnage descended into the downtown core. This was before the honking started, before the Nazi flags were photographed and shared on Twitter. We were seeing $70,000 to $80,000 full-size pickup trucks that were two to three times taller than myself, revving their engines, burning the metal inside their transmissions, screeching tires every time they moved, with flags hanging off the back like the yellow one with the snake, that is a known far-right dark web emblem. I was hearing the air brakes, gear changes, and fuel pump noises of the transport trucks storming into the capital from the highway. And I live approximately 1 km away from the highway. Then the honking started and I could hear that too. Then the trucks started rolling up and down Overbrook streets and onto the Vanier Parkway. And the honking and engine noises got even louder, especially at night. The noise was noticeable through the windows and walls of my house. I started to get updates from residents closer to the staging area at the Hampton Inn parking lot. This is when I realized that we would have to be our own sources of intelligence if we wanted to survive this thing because there was zero communication coming from any level of government. We became glued to our smartphones and mobile devices. The sparse reporting on the occupation given by news outlets was providing a very broken picture of what was happening in our neighborhood, but it was at least better than nothing. By the time the convoy showed up, I already had a very good picture in my head of who we were dealing with. So why didn't our politicians or the police? I knew that some of the organizers were directly related to the people who orchestrated the Yellow Vest protests in front of Parliament Hill some time before, who had ties to neo-Nazi groups across the country. Why did the police act as if this was not going to evolve into a worst-case scenario? As someone who lives in a part of town with one of the highest poverty rates in the country, where 50% of the population lives below the poverty line, where many residents are racialized and are specifically targeted by the crushing oppression of a system that mandates the marginalization of Black and Brown people, what was very real for us, open and unchecked white supremacy, became even realer and took on a new form we've been long expecting and mentally preparing for. To further this point, I want to say that I do not consent to anyone using my presentation as a way to increase more funding for the police, who are absolutely useless and are no longer a sustainable or viable option for community safety in general. The fight against the violence of white supremacy never ended and didn't start when the far-right convoy showed up. The only difference was that these people branded themselves in the most openly racist way possible and were showing the world that they weren't going to hide any of it. 'Hey Ottawa, get ready because bullets are gonna fly,' one head organizer said during a Facebook livestream. The same organizer who was making physical appearances and restocking supplies at the Coventry Road Hampton Inn parking lot, that the far-right Freedom Convoy had turned into a full-blown army barrack by then. The word started spreading that they were hiding weapons and ammo at Coventry. Then we found out that one of the lead organizers is an RCMP-trained sniper who used to work for the Prime Minister's Office. This is the kind of information we are left with. And yet still, no clarity and not a single word of advice or caution or reassurance came from any politician or staff from any level of government. We couldn't help but tell ourselves that the reason the world allowed this far-right Freedom Convoy to park in our backyards was because the people of Overbrook and Vanier don't matter to anyone in the world or the city. And it's underlined by the fact that even though I have been out there month after month reminding people that the convoy invaded Overbrook and Vanier too, people in prominent positions in the city still forget to mention and include us when they're out there telling their version of the events. Honestly, I wish I didn't have to be here to lose my energy and put myself in danger to remind the city that we matter too and that we were affected too. With that said, I would like to say that colonization itself is an ongoing occupation, even when the convoy is not in town. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for your testimony. I definitely wanted to ask about the discrepancy of attention paid towards Centertown versus Overbrook and Vanier.
Yes.
From your perspective, when, did you ever publicly speak to maybe representation in the Overbrook-Vanier area, particular counselors, or other political leaders about that discrepancy and the lack of attention that was being paid to not only the residents of that area, but the fact that the close proximity to that station area and its direct impact on people? Just wanted to know more about your experience there, if you can flesh that out a bit?
Yes, I was day in and day out during the entire occupation on social media, reminding people that when the trucks leave downtown, when they leave Confederation Park, or when they leave Elgin, or when they leave Parliament Hill, they come back to Vanier and Overbrook. They are our nightmares still. A lot of people celebrated when they saw some of the trucks move away and some of the streets cleared up in Centertown. But those trucks came back to our neighborhood and clogged up our streets and made us less safe in return. And I was literally on social media probably every single day, you know, getting sick of my own voice, telling people, you know, tagging people, sending emails with as many people, key people as possible in the area. You name it, BIA people, provincial MPs, MVPs, federal MPs, our councillor, Ralston King. I was tagging Matthew Fleury, I was tagging, you name it. Community associations, just saying, someone needs to remind the folks that are in power, that are paying attention to this, that are keeping track of this, that Overbrook and Vanier is also affected. Please. We're not trying to gain anything. We're not trying to take anything. We're not trying to win anything by doing that. We just want people to remember, to not forget, that they're still here. The terror of their, their goals was still very real to us at all times throughout the entire occupation, even when they were not downtown. I hope that answers the question.
Sure does.
Yes.
You mentioned a few times brown people or racialized communities. What did you hear from those communities? You seem like to be in contact with, you have some friends and active on social media. What did you hear? Or do you have any experience you want to share, like personal experience? And this is not, I mean, if you feel uncomfortable, please don't. But do you have anything really concrete or experience that you heard about or that happened to you? Especially talking about racialized communities?
It's such a, it's so hard to remember because it was just trauma the whole time. So my memory is completely wiped in a lot of ways. Like, people were afraid to go outside. Like, they were, we're talking about... there's a corner in Overbrook where all the kids congregate on the corner of like, I'm not gonna say it here, but where they take the bus to go to school every morning. There's like hundreds of kids that go to school from that area that is just not even three blocks from where the Coventry staging area was. So that, they were severely under risk by these erratic, far-right lunatics. We had people that were sharing supplies with each other because they weren't going to grocery shopping or going to Canadian Tire anymore. The convoy people were going to Canadian Tire and they were getting in fights at the Canadian Tire. There was stories, like, I don't, I don't understand how these stories didn't make it to the news, like they were, there was like fists flying at Canadian Tire at one point, apparently. People were being attacked, people were being threatened, shoppers alike. I would go all the way to Beechwood myself and I would be confronted by someone who's obviously part of the convoy, who like locked eyes on me and followed me throughout the store, was just giving me that energy that like something was about to go off, you know? So I'm just trying to like mentally de-escalate and not cause anything to go left while I'm just trying to buy some milk, you know, so yeah, there was like real threats for a lot of people, yeah, in that area, and definitely, you know, we felt a different sort of weight than other people were feeling.
You mentioned, "Hey Ottawa, get ready, bullets are gonna to fly."
Yeah.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I did, yeah. It was in a livestream.
I wanted to pick up on your reference to, I think the way you described it, you know, that you had had to become your own sources of intelligence.
Yes.
And I mean, obviously, what, what was set up or what was allowed to, to take hold in, in, at Coventry, wa, this staging area was extraordinary, it was, was exceptional. And I, I guess I'm really trying to understand what kind of information, if any, were you receiving from, even just basic information so that the community can have a bit of an understanding about what's happening here? Why is it being allowed to happen? What, what measures are being taken to, to provide some sense of security, you know, a, a basic information flow of some kind? Was there anything of that sort happening?
Officially, or just?
Yeah, officially.
Between people?
It's the kind of thing you would, you would almost expect that there would have been three or four times a day, you know, information bulletins being released to provide more information.
At least, at least.
Was there anything of that sort happening?
Nothing whatsoever.
Through unofficial channels? Were there any kinds of ways that you could get a sense as to what's going on here and what can we as a community expect?
I know I'm part of a lot of email lists. Like, the Rita Rockliff Ward people have my email and they send out regular updates about things that are happening in my ward. There are giant email lists out there that could have been used to, you know, spread out information, give timely updates, provide clarity and specifics on what is to be expected. When is there, when is there gonna be some sort of mobilization? What should we expect in terms of timeframe? Everything was focused on downtown. When are the trucks gonna come out of downtown? When are the trucks gonna move out of the, out of the way of the parliament? Gas canisters, gas canisters. Well, those gas canisters were coming, like, the refilling of those gas canisters were happening in Overbrook because we're like surrounded by gas stations. And they were taking those canisters on the back of flatbeds that usually are used for like towing trucks, and they were driving them up and down the streets that go directly to the Coventry staging area. We had no information about that. We felt like we were going crazy because we heard them, we saw them, but there was no follow-up from any official channel saying, "Yes, what you're seeing is actually happening." It's hard. It's like, information sharing is hard when you don't have kind of like official confirmation. Right? We see what we see, and it's very unexpected, it's surprising, it's like something that you don't expect to see when you're turning around a corner, you know, and it's just like, we're just constantly in shock and we're trying to paint a picture. People become unofficial sources of intel, so like just civilians turn into like the official person that knows things, even though we're just kind of flying by the seat of our pants, you know? So I'm waking up to messages like, "Yo, well, you know, you knew these things yesterday, what do you think's gonna happen today? Should I go to this coffee shop, or should I do this?" I'm helping people plan their lives through Instagram messages, like, and I'm in my bedroom just hunkered down, like, having, I have no idea what's happening in the outside world. It's, it's dangerous.
I have a question. Just to go back where you started, you, and it's tied to what you're talking about right now. You said that you could see movement in these big trucks and you, so you weren't surprised at all when they kind of were stationed there? Can you just give me a little sense of the timeline? Like, when did you start realizing, "Wait a second, these, these, these guys are moving in," and you sort of had, you started to make connections, like with the Yellow Vests and all of that? Just a bit of a timeframe there?
Yeah, it was like mostly there was like some info that was being shared online. I forgot the exact timeframe, so like, I don't know if there's even an official start date for the convoy that you guys referenced, but it was like a few days, a couple, two or three days before. Let's say that it started on a weekend.
Right.
It, I was getting info probably two weeks ahead of time. Actually, online. I was, through, you know, my networks and through my, through my online presence, I was able to receive information probably two weeks ahead of time.
Right.
That certain, these certain elements were mobilizing and that things were gonna happen and turn into something really bad here in the city. And then like, I actually saw them physically like two or three days before things got, things really kicked into gear in, in the downtown core.
Right. I just want to follow up, not with that, with something Alex said about information bulletins. I just, you, you might not know how helpful your testimony has been in clarifying some things for me already. The idea that you weren't provided with any information is shocking to me. I, it, it triggered in me a memory. I was in the lockdown on Parliament Hill when the shooter was there, and I was in the, whatever, I was in the senate hearing room actually when it happened, and we were given minute-by-minute updates of what was going on.
Yeah.
Minute by minute, for twelve hours. So it just dawns on me, so thank you very much.
I was on Slater when that happened. And like, so I know, you know, but, so I, we have a different, I have an expectation level for living while, because of someone, because of being someone that lives in the city.
Yeah.
And is like, you know, attuned to the different levels of government than how they, how they do comms and how they do emergency preparedness and all that stuff. None of that here.
Exactly.
I think, Debbie, did you have another question?
My question actually is related to, in, like, intelligence gathering and community having to do that, but you already spoke to it, so thank you.
Yeah.
So thank you so much. Sorry. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Hi there. My name's Paul, and I live right at the heart of things, Kent and Laurier, so ground zero. I work from home. My work centers largely around helping reduce barriers for people with disabilities. And I moved here to Ottawa in two thousand and two, actually, just last month was the twentieth anniversary of my moving to this city. I choose to live here because I love it here, despite what people say about this city being, you know, less fun than Montreal or Toronto or whatever, I like it here. And I, one of the things I like about it is that it is a place for people to gather and to express different political opinions, even if they're political opinions that I don't necessarily agree with. I like seeing vibrant democracy and political expressions present themselves. But at a certain point in time, I think we need to realize that there are lines that can be crossed. And there is a certain point in time where lines are crossed, where it is no longer just, "That is a demonstration that I disagree with personally." That that is something that's not my cup of tea. And I think we can talk a lot about where those lines might be, but I'm gonna suggest to you that one of those lines, that when you cross it, it's no longer just a, you know, a, a unique quirky little situation, that it's now criminal, is somewhere around the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty decibels. Now, why do I pick that number? Train horns run somewhere between a hundred and ten and a hundred and fifty decibels. There were at least one truck that was souped up, that, not satisfied enough with the deafening roar of a regular eighteen-wheeler, this person had souped their truck up with a train horn that runs a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifty decibels. Now, it's hard to wrap your head around this if you didn't live it up close and personal, but allow me to put it into context for you. The US military and police forces around the world use what is called crowd, non-lethal crowd suppressive weapons. Those run at a hundred and sixty decibels. The medical literature on this is not fully fleshed out, so we don't know the long-term impacts of it. And that's why I suggest to you that lines were crossed and that this was not okay. It was not okay that I was personally confined to my building. They blocked, chock-a-block, the entire street, including the loading bay, so I could not leave with my vehicle because they had blocked it. That was not okay. They kept us awake and bragged about it. Pat King bragged about it in a famously viral video. That was not okay. I was personally threatened. That was not okay. The building was threatened and security was called in, and they locked us in the building to prevent the building from being stormed. It turned out that some people from the higher floors had just had enough after several weeks and had thrown some eggs or produce at the people below, and the people retaliated by threatening to do I don't know what, I wasn't there, I'm not going to speculate, but it was enough that security was called in and they locked us all in the building. Fireworks were set off at the level of my balcony between high-rise buildings. That was not okay. There are three people with disabilities in my building. One blind person, two people with wheelchairs. Paratranspo was suspended for the entirety of the twenty-two days that they occupied. The blind person has to navigate this world using hearing. I have the privilege, that I went out and bought the most expensive set of noise-canceling headphones that I could find. He didn't have that privilege. That was not okay. On more than one occasion, I ran low on food because the grocery stores were closed because they were swarmed by convoiers, and I could get no food delivery to the building. That was not okay. Ultimately, I had to flee town, and in order to get out of my building in my vehicle, I had to drive on the sidewalk for a block because they wouldn't let us out and they were blocking the road. That was not okay. There were cars driving around towards the end of it, once traffic could circulate, with no license plates. This was made aware by me to police. They told us they didn't care, or that they weren't, there wasn't anything they could do about it, or that they weren't going to do anything about it. That was not okay. There was a cruel bitter irony in this whole thing, which was that my property tax bill came due during the occupation. I had to pay for services not rendered, and I have a personal policy of not paying for services that were not rendered. That was not okay. In the last weekend before they were cleared out, when finally some of us had had enough and we decided to put our bodies in traffic and block traffic in Billings Bridge on Elgin Street and, and near the, the Nature Museum, one OPP officer who had been called in from out of town attempted to make us feel guilty for pulling him off of more important duties. And that was not okay. While I was participating in this blockade, putting my body in front of traffic, which is something I've never done before, by the way, I spoke with a girl who lived on my street, on a main floor of Kent Street, actually, and she had talked about how she had been continually harassed. She had been harassed when she left her building wearing a mask. She tried then wearing, leaving her building not wearing a mask, and that got her equal amounts of harassment. That was not okay. It was not okay that the police directed the traffic to Kent Street, to Lower Town, and to Overbrook, the three poorest parts of town. It is not okay that the occupation happened in Somerset Ward, which is the poorest ward in town. And it is not okay that Chief Slalley and Mayor Watson allowed this to continue, to allow this to continue. If, I invite people to consider for a moment, what would have happened if somebody had parked their car across the driveway of Chief Slalley or Mayor Watson's home for twenty-two days? If they would be as blasé and as laissez-faire about that as do nothing about it, as they were when it was the poor people in this city who were thrown to the wolves? I invite you to consider whether there would have continued to have been inaction for twenty-two days if it had been them. And actually, I'll go one step further and say, you don't even need to imagine this hypothetical scenario because in the opening days of this occupation, the trucks were directed partially towards Queen Elizabeth Drive in the Golden Triangle and in the Glebe. And you know what? The Glebe and the Golden Triangle got concrete bollards and they got their trucks cleared out. We did not. And I don't think that's okay either. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for that, that very, both impassioned but, but very informative presentation. You covered a lot. And I, I could, and would love to, to pursue any number of those threads, but, but I'm just gonna pick on one. And that's because two or three times you referred with great concern about the situation for people with disabilities. And, and you've referenced the fact that that's your professional work as well. And now, we anticipate we will be engaging with and hearing from people directly, so I, I want you to be aware of that. I'm not asking you to speak for a community, but, but given, given that reference and, and, and the concern that you expressed about the, the three people in your building even, for instance, I'm wondering if you could, could say a bit more about how you saw the response to what this occupation must have been like for people living with disabilities? One would imagine, and certainly from a human rights perspective, there's an obligation to be very attentive to that on the part of officials, on the part of the police, that there's a particularly vulnerable community in that context, that therefore requires a heightened level of attention. What was your, what did you observe in terms of what was happening for people with disabilities?
So there's two questions there. One is, what did I observe and what was the response? What did I observe was absolutely nothing. They stayed in their homes, they couldn't leave. They couldn't leave because the entire municipal infrastructure that serves people with disabilities was suspended from my neighborhood. Paratranspo was suspended. They couldn't get around, and so therefore they were confined to home, I presume, considering I didn't see them in my building, I didn't see them in the hallway, I didn't see them anywhere else. In terms of the response, well, the response was actually very simple, and I can share it with you right here. Nothing, absolutely nothing. We were given absolutely no communications, there was absolutely no even most benign nothing platitudes were given for these people. They were allowed to twist in the wind.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. You had mentioned, and if you're comfortable sharing this, I'd, I'd love to hear more, that you were personally threatened, and then you also mentioned that because the building was threatened, I guess, building management had to go and lock you folks in.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you could elaborate on both of those experiences?
Sure.
What did you hear? And what did maybe you and your neighbors experience having to be forcibly locked in to protect yourselves?
Sure, those are two different instances. They happened actually weeks apart. One was, oh, either first, second, or third day, very early on. The latter was later on in the, in the occupation. I don't have the exact date, but I would presume somewhere around day, I don't know, sixteen or seventeen, something, something in that neighborhood there, maybe fifteen. The first instance was quite simple. You know, at that time in our building, as in all buildings, people were required to wear a mask indoors. So if you're required to wear a mask indoor, I require, I, I wear a mask indoor. When you leave, there is some period of time where you are still wearing your mask because you haven't taken it off, you know, because you've just literally walked outside of your home. And there were a gaggle of hooligans or whatever the collective noun is for them. And they surrounded us and they, "Oh, you're wearing masks," and we had to push through them. The second incident, I wasn't there for it. All I know is I came down to the lobby of my building and the security was there and they were stopping us, and they said the door was locked, that, you know, if we absolutely needed to leave, they could unlock the door and escort us out, but that they needed but that they needed to lock us back out again afterwards because there had been threats. This was straight from security.
Thank you.
Just a very simple question. Was your work disrupted during this time?
Yes.
And could you just elaborate a little bit on that?
I can't. But I can tell you that it was disrupted.
I mean, to the point of you not being able to do some work during some days, during the entire time?
We had to flee town for 10 days.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did you hear about other residents in your building or in the neighborhood that also, like, went away from the town? Did you hear something?
Sure. Well, I mean, let me be very clear. Anybody who had the means and ability to leave town did. It was a horror show. Nobody who, you know, who had the means and ability to leave town would not have left that horror show. I was only able to leave because I was ultimately so desperate that I was willing to break the law and drive on the sidewalk for a block, for a city block, in order to be able to get my vehicle out of my building because they literally were parked right up to the entrance to the parking garage, and they would not move, and they didn't care. There's a whole bunch of stuff that I didn't mention in my speech, too. For instance, I also called 311 and I was told to do nothing. We heard the horns for days afterwards. When we were in rural Quebec, we could still hear the horns ringing in our ears. You know, the city police, I only saw them towards the very end, again, in groups, as was said earlier. And I asked them at that point in time, if I had parked my car diagonally across Kent Street for, at that time, 19 days, would that be a traffic violation or would that be a parking violation? Because on a philosophical level, I'm really curious about that, and they couldn't answer that question.
So you actually brought a very important point, which is, this sad episode brought to light some sort of the one, the have, and the have-not. And basically, I mean, despite all what you have been through, you were literally, like, somehow able to flee this sad situation. However, you mentioned the disabled people, and also you mentioned people who do not, cannot afford it, who were badly affected by this. So thank you very much for bringing this important image into, like, how our city is, in a way, planned or, you know, with some pockets where people are stuck because of the lack of their means or, thank you.
I do have one more question, if we have time. And you had mentioned, for the first time, that you participated in a blockade to actually physically stop folks from occupying the city.
That's right, I did.
I just wanted to know what your experience was like because you weren't the first person who participated in their first blockade. And so I wanted to know if you wanted to speak more about that.
It was extraordinarily positive to meet fellow people, to know that you're not alone, to try to do something positive for a change. The first positive thing in that God-forsaken three weeks. It was extremely heartening. I was threatened with arrest, you know, at the very beginning. The cops got out in the way that they get out. They put their gloves on. They try and act menacing in order to get you to go. And they could see in my eyes and the eyes of the other people there that we were not moving. And there was a great deal of positive sentiment, I would say, from all of us there. We stayed there for hours, and it was a bitterly cold day. But we were warmed by the acts of that we were doing.
Did you know when you, excuse me, did you know when you went to do that blockade that you wouldn't be alone?
No, I didn't know that I was going to be joining a blockade to begin with. I thought I was just going to be joining a protest because I knew that I needed to do something. I couldn't, I couldn't sit by with one of the worst injustices that I've ever witnessed in my life personally up front. I mean, you see injustice on the TV, right? You see, you know, a boatload of refugees drowned to death in the Mediterranean. And it's horrible, but it's also distant. And I've never seen an injustice, and I'm not comparing the injustice that we suffered with that, but in terms of just the magnitude of an injustice, but that's also right up front, that you can hear out your window and also see on television. I'd never experienced anything like that in my life. I also was right there with the shooter on Parliament Hill there. I was, you know, right in the thick of it there. In fact, actually, I was working with an organization that was organizing an event with children actually on the hill. We had to divert the buses and things like that because that's where they were headed. So I needed to do something. I knew that I would never be able to sleep if I didn't do something. So it was only, once we got there, that it turned into that organically, you know.
Would you have gone out if it was just you alone to protest, I mean?
I don't know.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
I'm really sorry, and I don't mean to be rude. When the red light goes off, it means you've spoken for five minutes, and we should have you wrap up. And I apologize because I didn't enforce that with anyone else before you, which seems hugely unfair. But we're running out of time, and we do want to hear from everyone, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather. I do not live in the downtown core. I live on Parkdale Avenue, which is adjacent to an on-off ramp. I'm an intensive care nurse who has worked and seen the worst of COVID and other critical care patients. Parkdale Avenue has a lot of healthcare workers that live on it, in that area. And during the initial phase of the occupation, trucks of all sizes were racing down Parkdale, honking their horns the entire first weekend. They were driving on sidewalks. There was video actually taken of that. No regard for the people that lived in that area or their safety. I only work night shifts, and I was working that weekend. And I got absolutely zero sleep going into work with those incessant horns. So it's not so much about me, but the patients that I cared for got a nurse that was exhausted. And I was exhausted anyways. But calling in sick was not an option because of our shortage. So I went in, I was probably 36, 40-some hours without sleep caring for critically ill patients. I called Jeff Leeper and also left an email, and he responded by saying he empathized. And I did that on February the 1st. So I'd been days. I worked four 12-hour shifts in a row. So that's the extent of my experience. So.
If I may? Yep. First of all, I always have to thank any nurse I encounter for your work for the last two and a half years. Yeah, really, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
But others might have questions, yeah?
I obviously totally agree with Lillani's sentiment in general, but in particular, what you've described as how you still felt so compelled to serve in the midst of what you were experiencing. Huge appreciation for that. Maybe just one further point with respect to what you did describe. Now, I wasn't as aware of what was happening on Parkdale, so thank you very much for sharing that with us. And that would seem to be something that should be of grave concern, given the fact that there is a hospital near there. Were you, and you had your own experience of contacting your counselor, are you aware of any effort that was being taken by police or by law to respond to, especially given that that was a hospital zone?
None, none. And the people that came to the city had no regard for anybody. They didn't, they just didn't care. They're driving on sidewalks, racing down there, just blaring their horns from one end of the street to the other incessantly. Yeah, it was impossible to sleep during that period. I work only night shifts, and I sleep during the day. So it was very impactful.
How about your patient? How did you, like, how did they cope with the?
The trucks didn't go by the hospital because they were going north off of Parkdale. But they had some exhausted healthcare workers. I've heard stories from other people at the hospital and other people that lived on Parkdale. And doctors that lived in the downtown core couldn't study stories like that. Ambulances that had trouble making their way through the core, which impacted the care and the lives of people.
Did your employer know what you were going through? And was there any response from your employer?
I spoke about it, but not really with my boss, just generally speaking.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Chandler. I live in Ottawa. I live about maybe two kilometers from downtown. I got married here. I raised two children here. I work full-time in Ottawa. I don't live in center town. I do live close to center town, and I live near two major arteries where trucks would come in going downtown. Last winter, the convoy protesters were concentrated in the route where I often walk, run, or ride my bike, walking mostly in the winter. During the truck, during the convoy, I took regular walks through the red zone where the protesters gathered and where many of the trucks parked. And my message is, it was about the trucks. It's always been about the trucks. A truck is a means of moving from one destination to another. And during the convoy, the trucks were a nuisance, blocking the downtown, turning our scenic capital into an eyesore. But it was more than that. Trucks can be used for transporting objects. Trucks are heavy. And here's the thing that, for me, separated the convoy from peaceful acts of civil disobedience. During the occupation, I never knew what was in those trucks. We didn't know at the time how it was going to end. Were there materials in those trucks that could hurt somebody? I don't know. And the thing is, we didn't know at the time. I still don't know. Maybe, maybe we'll never know. So not knowing what was in the trucks created the fear that innocent Ottawa residents could be hurt indiscriminately. For me, the constant fear was the worst thing about the convoy. Jolting awake at night with the slightest sound, even though my neighborhood was relatively quiet and peaceful. A pounding heart whenever I saw an ambulance or heard a police siren, a sinking feeling on the weekends, seeing more trucks arrive. Trucks containing what? Maybe food for the truckers who were already here? Maybe snow shovels, maybe a bouncy castle for the kids? Or could it have been something else? If there were any assurances given after the fact that nothing sinister was planned, that does not alter the fact that for weeks, there was this sense of intimidation. The convoy members that I encountered did not earn my trust that they had love in their hearts for me. Their behavior was their message, not the phony words of love I heard from them on Wellington Street. One day, historians will evaluate the evidence to enable us to get a full picture of what happened, what this movement was. I don't need textbooks and conferences to tell me that, as a longtime resident of Ottawa, I spent three weeks feeling terrified. And I don't scare easily. I went to graduate school in Manhattan, and I was in Moscow in 1991 when the Soviet Union collapsed. I've seen some tense situations where I felt vulnerable, and I carried on. Similarly, feelings of fear did not deter me from walking to Wellington Street, even walking in between rows of big trucks and looking people in the eye because I wanted to remember that moment. And I was hoping that a day like this would come when I could tell my story and thank you for this. Nothing compares to a situation where you walk in the streets that you know so well from daily walks and so many walks during the pandemic because that's what there was to do. But you find yourself feeling like a stranger in your own city, where you arrive home from a walk and take three asthma medications to cope with shortness of breath brought on by diesel fumes, where people in trucks drove blithely downtown using a route near the police station and felt free to heckle, honk, drive recklessly through residential neighborhoods, and display flags with messages of hate. When you see men carry jerrycans around downtown, were they empty? Do they have water in them? Do they have gasoline? I don't know. And you see those jerrycans, and you wonder whether something will catch fire. And you don't know what's going to happen. And where an unmasked person might yell at a masked person in a local coffee shop to "Do your research." It's the slow boil stress and fear over three weeks that can corrode a person's sense of security and trust in the place they call home. Many participants may have believed that their protest was peaceful and that they had love in their hearts. Some of the posters that they put up on the fence of Parliament Hill displayed that message. Those words are easy to say, and they were particularly meaningless when I heard them directed to me personally from a megaphone from within a small crowd in a city block on Kent Street jammed with trucks. Other posters sent a less conciliatory message. Flags displaying F. Trudeau were ubiquitous and plainly visible to children in parts of Ottawa as they came home from school. We're used to police in Ottawa as a capital city, so police are visible to accompany motorcades of visiting leaders or manage buoyant crowds on Canada Day. We're used to peaceful demonstrations in Ottawa, which we may join, ignore, or disapprove of as we wish. We're used to visitors in Ottawa from Canada, coming from other parts of Canada and around the world who come to enjoy the beauty of the city. But I will never get used to trucks whose drivers heckle and bother residents as it suggests that they're unfriendly. And unfriendly people in trucks scare me because I don't know what's in their trucks. I'm sure there are sociological reasons for this convoy movement. What I saw downtown convinced me that the movement was complex and diverse, but it will be someone else's job to try to explain it. I can't and won't. The moment those trucks rolled into town heckling and honking, I lost interest in hearing their point of view. The trucks were their statement, not their speech. The trucks ended the conversation for me because they're big, heavy, and scary, and I didn't know what was in them. Thank you.
I have one question, sorry. Oh, my God. You said that you were hoping to be able to tell your story or your experience, and now you've had the opportunity. Were you expecting that you might have an opportunity to tell your story in some other way, some other? Like, does it surprise you that you're here at an Ottawa People's Commission? Had you thought there might be town halls? Or I don't know what one might have expected? Or maybe you had no expectation?
I had no expectation. I just started writing a diary of what I saw because... because I knew if I didn't, it would just all be a blur later. And I just wanted to remember what it actually felt like and smelled like and looked like and how it evolved from one day to the next. And mostly, I just wanted to have a record. I didn't know what would happen to it. You know, maybe I would try to write an essay or something. Or I don't know what. I just didn't want it to pass unnoticed and unrecorded. And I just thought, I'll write it down because I want to remember for myself. And maybe someday it will be helpful to remember some of these details.
I found your comments very helpful. Thank you so much.
Yes, no, thank you very much for that. As that was unfolding for you over those three and a half weeks and as you were taking your forays down to Wellington Street and seeing and experiencing what you did, were there ever times when you felt like you wanted to report something, contact the police, get some sort of involvement from officials? Maybe you did. But just what, I guess, in a general sense, I'm interested in what your feelings were about how your government and police were responding to this.
I was very grateful for the downtown city councillors who showed how concerned that they were, who were very active on social media, who reached out to residents and also that they were vocal in city council to try to stand up for residents. So I was very, that helped my morale to hear the words of the councillors from Capital Ward and Somerset Ward and Kitchell Zippy Ward, I guess, in particular. In terms of reporting anything myself, well, I saw police down there and they were always looking away from the citizenry. They were always looking away from the sidewalk. It was uncanny. There was one time I was walking south on Kent Street. I have it written down in my notes, the date, but I can't remember. I was walking south on Kent Street and it was about 10 after 9:00 in the morning on a weekday. And a truck came and drove on the sidewalk approaching me. And I just kind of stood my ground. And the driver just kept going. And at the last minute, he kind of drove back into the street. And there were police at the intersection half a block away. If I remember correctly, it was between Slater and Laurier. So what was the point of reporting anything? I just kept seeing them and they were looking at the trucks. They just never seemed to be looking at residents.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. My name is Cliff. I'm a disabled senior residing in a rooming house within the red zone. The people there are part of a nameless and faceless living in the downtown core of the city. Our perspective of this protest was both unique and sad. We lived it within our faces every hour, every day with little or no means of escape or respite. When I saw the press coverage of the protest as it moved across Canada, I was reminded of the trek to Ottawa some 30 years ago as a result of the Depression. Something I thought was an important part of Canadiana history. When the protest arrived, I walked the streets, saw legitimate reasons for the truckers to be there. Overregulation, rising fuel prices, restrictions imposed by COVID sanctions. We're crippling the trucking industry. It's tough to make a living in an industry that's vital to all our well-being and the linchpin of the economy with an estimated net, almost net, sorry, excuse me, with an estimated net almost $3 billion daily. That being said, what I saw was the beginning of the most disturbing and most surreal experience I've ever seen. A few minor incidents occurred at the beginning, although unknowing, were tolerable. The desecration of the tomb of the unknown soldier at the Ottawa Senataf marked a visible turn in the intent of the protest. This was a despicable act. I come from a generation of two generations of war veterans. They would be disgusted with the treatment of such a horrible and disgusting tribute to men and women who sacrificed so much to this country. This was disgusting, to say the least. As well, the presence of the cloth Star of David on some protesters was unbelievable. How dare you compare your plight to those of the Holocaust? Anti-science, anti-science and anti-vaccine speech and posters were popping up everywhere. As a lifelong student whose belief in the value and benefits of science for the betterment of humankind was contrary to my academic background, I had protesters yelling directly in my face that scientists knew that vaccines did not work and in fact made people sick and caused lung cancer and other diseases. The belief that masks provided zero protection and possibly caused more issues than they solved was appalling. The Spanish flu in 1919 killed upwards of maybe 50 million people. And the con pre prevention that came out of that was the use of masks. Pseudoscience was rampant at the protest and was being pushed as an absolute truth to anyone who willing to listen. I witnessed so many individuals ignoring the mask policy on business in the bank street that we frequented. Sedition talk and signage appeared everywhere. Anti-government and insurrectional sentiment and commentary was commonplace. The words tyranny and freedom were used so frequently that I began to think the words were misunderstood. We all know that tyranny means a nation under a cruel and oppressive government. That's not our country. Our country is a place of peace, acceptance, understanding, and opportunity. The protests shattered that image for us overnight. Stories of protester interactions, protesters, sorry, stories of protester interactions from my neighbors in my building started to surface daily. People were verbally assaulted, chased down sidewalks, harassed, verbally abused for wearing face masks. I, myself, a disabled senior, had a bullhorn pointed in my face and had negative comments yelled at me about wearing a face mask and taking vaccines. I was pushed by young protesters wearing a Canadian flag as they walked down the street. I suffer from severe back pain and require cane to move about the city. This was dangerous for me. I heard stories from an elderly couple whose life had been verbally assaulted and then pushed to the ground as she had left to go into her apartment to go to her cancer treatment. Signage condemning Trudeau as a dictator was disheartening. I personally witnessed a family with younger children being dressed by a father in F Trudeau t-shirts, sweatshirts. The presence of signage encouraging the overthrowing of illegally elected officials was alarming. These sentiments tear away at the very fabric of Canadians and what our forefathers died for and what has been treated with the harshest required to protect the core of our democracy. It affected me deeply. I was born in England, came to Canada as a young lad. Canada Day has always been a very joyous occasion for me and my family, as well as others around our capital city. To hear and see such hateful speech about our country is truly offensive. Our great and unknown tragedy, the siege, is that the homeless and marginalized individuals had little information about what was going on. They were truly alone, scared, and forced out of their familiar surroundings. Trust me, I know this as if I walked the streets every day for seven years in center town. The homeless people had disappeared. Where they went was unknown to me. We lost our bus service, critically important to people living in the downtown community, and those at the poverty level. The tenants of my building missed important medical and mental therapy appointments essential to their personal well-being. Rooming house tenants, living in existence, the struggles for successes and survival at the best of times. And here we were, isolated inside a red zone. The constant noise, smoke, and often frightening horn blasts wreaked havoc on a population that is greatly impacted by mental illness. I understand that the people with better financial situations suffered under this occupation. And I may no means mean to disrespect the plight they suffered. But the disadvantaged have no options for escape, none. They had no other place to go. My friends and I went around our daily business as usual, what we suffered from the closure of businesses as well as the result of the protest. Important free food locations were operating at a reduced capacity due to road closures. These locations depend heavily on donations to maintain their stockpiles. And I noticed that the protests impacted them in such a way that they can no longer provide that same high level of service. This equates to food insecurity for people dependent on the community for help. Even the symbol of act of walking to our daily activities was impeded. It's akin to walking a protest line as a scab laborer at a strike. You always had to be on guard and you're always looking over your shoulder. As the protest neared the end, you could actually feel the tension in the air. It was like a thick fog. I thought to myself that a world-class city could turn into a war zone with thousands of combatants involved in street fighting. I thought, how can this happen here? I did not know all of the protesters would want a conflict, but there were segments that did. And it was obvious, some men just want to see the world burn. As I walked the center town area, my community home for seven years, I noticed how organized and well-funded the protest was. Every morning at the corner of Kent and Napan, I witnessed a gathering of 40, 50 or so protesters listening to a man wielding a clipboard. He was dueling out the information like, get your laundry here by 11:00 a.m. every morning so it could be done the next day. Fuel will be delivered at this time, so you need to let us know. Please avoid engaging in debates over the rally to avoid any negative news. This information was delivered like a military briefing. And I began to refer to this guy as a field commander because that's exactly what he was doing. The level of organization surprised me and was both shockingly extensive and unexpected. There were food and drink locations established throughout the downtown core. And the Line Street Transit Station shelters were turned into a makeshift kitchen and supply depot. The front of St. Patrick's Church became a garbage dump much to the may of the priests of that beautiful church. Snowbanks were created to provide barricades for trucks at every intersection stretching from Kent, starting at Napan Street. This made navigation of the city very difficult and treacherous. The transgressions, meanness, heat speech, and condemnation of this best country in the world are too numerous to mention. I reflected on this and have discussed it in depth with my friends and come to a very disturbing conclusion that should shake us all. The right to legal protest is not only protected by our charter, it is a right that we all have as humans. Now, unfortunately, we see a Canadian flag or a protest assembling and we all mainly think, go home, get the fuck out of the city. Something has been taking us and we should be sad. The OPC is an excellent forum for us to voice our concerns and have our stories heard. It has given the voiceless a venue to express themselves. The underprivileged need the OPC to fight for us and I believe no one else will. One of the questions that I really have at the end of this to be answered is the intelligence gathering of the convoy as it began in its roots, well, from its cross-going across Canada in Delta B C. How the OPS, OPP, CSIS, and RCMP could be so unprepared for an operation of this magnitude? Thank you.
I didn't think I'd walk away.
No, certainly not, Cliff, because that was incredibly powerful. And I think you've named a lot of things in very clear and succinct ways that I could see resonate with a lot of people in the room. If you were here earlier, you may have seen that the questions I'm asking are often trying to understand more about the response from police and government. And so I would be curious if you have anything you wanted to share on that front. You've described how things happened to you yourself in being threatened and attacked, things you've witnessed.
I don't really rely on the police for that. Because I am a rooming house situation, I regard the police as sort of an intermediate to break up fights, et cetera. I didn't expect to, I didn't feel necessary, like I was going to take care of myself. An absolute call to 31191 and it would just be absolutely not beneficial for us. If there was something of a serious incident where maybe one of the fellows, maybe with a mental health problem, then when it goes to that, we have people to go to to make sure that it's been taken care of. Unfortunately, we didn't have to go to any of those lengths. In the end, I did have, at the final conclusion of it all, when they did break it up, I was very appreciative of what they had done and why it had taken so long, why it had taken 22 days to come to a conclusion like that. It was beyond me. Like, it seemed that the police had done everything in their power to, they were aware of the convoy coming in. They were in communication with them. They were told that the protest would be no longer than three days. And it kept going on and on and on. And it wasn't until the 19th or 20th day that the intervention took place down by the Rito Center and moved everybody, moved the protesters out of the city. So that took a long, long time. But I was never, I never thought about making any kind of, you know, call to the Ottawa Police because I didn't think it would go anywhere early. I thought...
Thank you. I have a question for you or maybe some more details. You said, you talked about how they were quite organized.
Oh, yeah.
Can you just, I mean, you talked about, they get the laundry?
There was obviously someone in there who had a military background and knew how to, first of all, what surprised me was the depots they had, the strategic staging areas they had. That's a military operation. I come from a military family. I'm not saying that I know everything about it, but I know when things take a military definition. To see that, to see that it's all staging areas, they would never run out of fuel because they would have these other areas. And there were lines. And nothing was, everything was covered. They were intent on staying there for a long time. Then that was the conclusion, I think, we all, my buddies and I came up with. They're here to stay. Crossing their lines every day was a pain in the ass. Excuse my language, but they were...
Are you afraid that they come back?
I don't think I ever saw them leave, actually. Every weekend, they're, 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 go around, maybe. Not as many of them, for sure. Whether that's a fringe group, I don't know. But you can, they're visible downtown.
Actually, I asked a question about the observations you made about how well organized they were and how it became very obvious that they were here for a long time.
Oh, yes.
Despite it being communicated through different channels to the public. Oh, it's only going to be for a couple of days. Just kind of reflecting the kind of laissez-faire approach that decision-makers had, that this wasn't something to take seriously. But you as a citizen saw.
Okay, what surprised me is that I didn't know this until afterward. What surprised me is that I didn't know this until afterwards, is that they were in communication with Ottawa Police, and they were helping them in that infantry staging area. And I thought, I couldn't figure that, why are they helping them so much like this? And I guess, to me, guess the answer was, let everything go smoothly. If we organize this, and I guess that was their, you know, that was the brain plan they came up with. If we help them organize this, we'll get them out of here in no time. But that just failed completely.
We're short on time. It's nine o'clock, but I have a few questions. So when I introduced myself, I said I was a human rights lawyer and an advocate. And in fact, I've spent all of my career working on homelessness and housing issues. So your testimony was super important to me and eye-opening, and you're so articulate and helpful. So I have a few questions. They might be a little off the wall, but I'm going to go for it. So yesterday, we heard from someone who really enjoyed the convoy and was really happy that the convoy was here in Ottawa. She had felt confined in her home for eighteen months or so because of COVID and mask-wearing, et cetera. So when the convoy came into town, she was super happy. But one of the things she said was that the convoy was feeding homeless people. And I just was wondering if you had any knowledge of that or verification of that?
This is my buddy. He's one of my roommates.
Right, thank you.
He reconstructed this, so I often refer to him. I just wanted to ask him in case he knew, but no. There was the only one thing that I can tell you was, there is an individual within our building whose daily duty is to go out and collect bottles.
Yeah.
He's a religious man.
Yeah.
And he told me once, coming back from his daily crossings of the protest lines, that they somehow found out that he was religious, and they gave him some money, and not a little money, a lot of money. And I guess a lot of money here, and I'm guessing fifty to a hundred dollars. But that was the only incident I ever heard of them feeding, or giving, handing out, any doing kind of, you know, food handouts or monetary handouts. That was the only one I came across.
Okay, thank you. My other question, I have two more, actually. You mentioned that some homeless people had been displaced, and I know how it works. You kind of stake out your territory and you own the abandoned parking lot, and that's kind of your zone, and you live quietly, and it's your little home. And so some of those folks have been displaced. And you also said that you, am I right that you said you hadn't seen them come back, or have they now come back?
Not the same people, definitely. They got taken over by a different transient group. What happened to, and I am sure people on Bank Street are a little near, you have a more transient drug-addicted crowd, with drug issues, and that seemed to be replacing. The people that were there before are no longer there.
Right.
Some, maybe, I would say, out of the total people that I would see down there, maybe ten percent, twenty percent came back, maybe.
Okay, that's helpful. And my last question, and I'm sorry, I'm belaboring this so late at night. So in my experience working with people who are living in homelessness, I have experience across the country, encounters with the police are pretty hostile. So the police are like moving you along and surveying and harassing, et cetera. And would you say, like, did you notice, we're hearing accounts of police like kind of really embracing the convoy, and would you agree that there was a different treatment by the police with these, the convoy folks who were occupying lands that weren't there?
Yeah, from the stories that we were hearing, it was more like they were on their side. And that was initially, and then it sort of got to this, how can I describe it? Like a nothing, nothing has happened. And then at the end, you were waiting for something to happen. You knew it was coming to a head. It's amazing, if I looked at my text to my friend, I would go, heads are going to roll. It's coming to a head now. And this is the part that worried me, and although I didn't discuss it, I knew there was a left-wing element to this, sorry, there was a right religious element to this. And I just wondering if they were going to surface at the end, because I was looking for an answer. I would look, day after day, I would look at these people in this thing, and I would say, who are these guys? And I did, I went investigative, and I looked behind Tamara, Mr. King, and a few of the others, and I see what their roots are. They're all Westerners, and they all belong to the exit party, and they're for the Western exit. And I actually have some belief in that. I think it's a big nation, and you can see why there might be a division of two parts of Canada. Coming here to protest and do what they did, I wasn't too sure how it was going to end. Very disturbed by Mr. King's approach to everything. It was a very violent oriented, and I did suspect that there might be a potential clash. Thankfully, those guys took in, and they settled things down, and they got rid of them. And I was thankful, I was very thankful. I went up to OPP officers the next day and thanked them for that part. Why they weren't there in the beginning or in the middle, I don't know. That's maybe a question to be answered somewhere down the line.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'm going to steal a minute. Thank you, thank you.
So apparently, one hundred and ten woods a minute, and it's under that, so we're good. No worries, we're here. So my dad died about six months before the convoy started, and the trucks began coming into the city around his birthday. I say this because the convoy drove into our streets with everything that people deal with and interrupted our everyday lives in our small areas of the city while the rest of the world looked on. I was taking classes and working from home due to the pandemic, and I was trying to get back into my studies while newly grieving. I live with my roommate at the intersection of Kent and Napan in Centertown. As the trucks came in from the highway on Kent and made their way north towards us, the horn started, and we'd been hearing news coverage of this convoy, and we were surprised when they were allowed into the city and residential areas. The sound was nonstop. You can feel it in your chest with the transport trucks. It's like a shock through your whole nervous system, and it was nonstop. My roommate's dog also didn't relieve herself for three days because of the stress, which I think is very important. There were a lot of impacts on the wildlife in the area that I don't think anyone's talked about. So we stayed at home for two weeks, hoping the sound would stop, and then we had a friend who, he was away, so we were able to stay at his house when it became clear that they weren't leaving, and we felt like we were stuck in limbo for that time, but we were extremely grateful that we had somewhere else to go. It felt so personal that they had traveled across the country, parked in front of our houses to assault us daily with sound, set off fireworks in our street near houses and windows, trapeze around with hate symbols, and make us feel afraid to leave our home after dark or at all. It was like they were holding us hostage, and the different levels of government that they were trying to negotiate with didn't care about us. It felt like no one cared what was happening. I called the police every day and asked if they were doing anything. They would respond that it was a peaceful protest, to which I disagreed. I would ask every time if my complaints were being written down, each time the answer was no. I called my local councillor, my MP, MPP, and no one got back to me, only a kind office assistant for my local MP who could only listen to me, and he was very nice, but he couldn't do anything. I ended up dropping two of the classes I was in due to the stress, and when my roommate and I had to stay at a friend's, at this friend's house, she got a parking ticket, while the people who were on Kent were getting a complete free pass, gridlocking the street. It goes without saying, there's an undercurrent of extremism and hate that's rising in this country, and it's so, I've written concerning, but it's beyond concerning, that these people made their plans clear and were met with absolutely no resistance. Thank you.
I know we're over time, but if you don't mind, I know at least I have one question, and maybe my colleagues do, but we'll be quick so that we don't keep people too long. First, my sympathies and condolences to you on the loss of your father. That must have indeed added to the trauma and difficulty at the time. I wanted to ask a bit more about what you said about your efforts to report this to the police. I think the way you described it was that you were calling the police daily.
Yeah.
And that you were told two things. Number one, that it was a peaceful protest. And secondly, that they would not take a record.
I was asking if they were making, well, they would say they wouldn't do anything, and then I said, are you at least writing this down, like, are you noting how many complaints that you have? And they said no each time. And then there was a time when I think someone in the police service made a statement that they were noting down complaints, and they had a figure of how many complaints there were, and at that point, I knew that was complete BS.
So can you maybe give us, how many times do you think you did call the police? And in any of those calls, did anyone even take your name or any personal details?
Daily for a week and a half, and I don't remember that ever happening. And each time, I made sure to ask if they were at least documenting, but they weren't.
And what kinds of complaints were you trying to make to the police? What sorts of things did you want to bring to their attention?
Well, it was the honking, and it was, people were idling on the street, which is also a bylaw infraction, and it's bad for the environment and the breathing for people. There was also, they were setting off fireworks in the street, I think someone else mentioned that. We were a block down, so they were setting them off in two separate fire intersections at different times. There was a time as well when they were first doing that, that someone, it looked like they'd set off a firework, but it didn't completely go off, and it was in the intersection, and there was a truck that went over the street on Napan, so it looked like it might, you know, cause some kind of explosion or something. It was just, yeah, fireworks.
So about ten calls to the police, and not once did anyone record your name, your address, your phone number?
Not that I remember.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. So I think it's important to recognize the impact that the occupation had on students, some of the youngest people in our communities, and you had to drop two courses. I know that students at U Ottawa, students at St. Paul's, students at Carleton were all impacted in some way. I'm just kind of curious if your institution provided any support during this time, or if you sought out that support from your institution?
I don't remember, no, I don't really remember. I mean, I had professors that were being really lenient at the time, like before I dropped the courses, they were being good about me sending in things late, but I don't remember the university making anything that was impactful or providing, you know, sometimes they say, we'll provide free counseling or whatever, I don't remember that. And I'm at the University of Ottawa.
Okay, yes, I do remember the university having to close down for at some point.
Yeah, I'm sure it did.
Because I think that's when folks were starting to go back to classes in person. But yeah, I was just kind of curious if, you know, depending on when you dropped your courses, I know at some point...
It was after that point.
It was after the point where you would be able to do so penalty-free?
Oh, it was penalty-free, sorry. It was penalty-free, but it was post the financial reimbursement date.
Okay, good to know.
So you didn't get your money back?
I'm trying to remember. I think that I submitted a claim, and then I did get it back, but it was, yeah.
Right, right. Did you have a question?
I don't know that it's so much a question, but I just, I really liked what you said. I mean, it, no one has said it yet, that it felt so personal.
Extremely.
Yeah, so you said they were parked right outside your home. Can you just explain, just describe to me a little bit, if you might, you don't have to, but just how it felt, did you leave the house or your apartment?
I paced. I went to the window, I went away from the window. My roommate told me to stop going to the window. I would go on the balcony. Initially, I was yelling, and then I realized that we were really identifiable. It's a three-story building, so I stopped doing that because the front door doesn't lock all the time.
You were yelling what, like at them?
I was just yelling, leave, go. I...
But then you stopped doing that, why?
I was afraid that they were going to come into the building and do something to us. My roommate especially was afraid because she takes her dog out three times a day. We're both very small, young women, so she asked me to stop at that point. I forget your question, I'm sorry.
No, that was my question.
Yeah.
I'm going to leave it there, it's late. I really appreciate, we all appreciate, your comments and everyone's testimonies. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Lee Lani mentioned, I want to thank all of you for being so patient and being here in attendance, but also special thank you to everyone who has testified today. There will be future testimonies. There aren't any dates locked yet, but I really encourage you all to kind of follow the Ottawa People's Commission on our website. So that's OPC-CPO.ca. You can also follow the Ottawa People's Commission on Twitter if you want to look for more rapid updates, if you are someone who's on social media. I also want to just extend a special thank you to our interpreters in the back who've been doing a fantastic job. Language accessibility really matters, and so thank you so much for the time you have put in. We also want to thank the folks at La Patro for hosting us, and for all of the people who we don't see, so those who will be cleaning up this space after we leave. Those are folks that often don't get thank yous, and so I want to make sure that they are acknowledged. We really, really, once again, thank you so much. I do believe our colleague from the Centertown Community Health Centre, still here? Hello. Thanks, I just wanted to point her out, I know it's late, but just in case there are folks who do want to talk to someone before they head home, our lovely comrade is here, so please feel free to check in with her if you need it. Other than that, thank you so much. Please stay in touch, there will be more, and we really appreciate the time you spent with us this evening. Thank you.